We're now going to go to the public comment and invite anyone wishing to speak on this item to be heard. If you have not already done so, we need you to submit a speaker slip to our planning staff so that we can put you into the queue. Please address your comments to the Planning Commission, and as always, clarity and brevity are appreciated. Speakers will be timed, and we've limited to three minutes each as a courtesy to others who may wish to speak. When you get to the podium, there are three lights. There is a green light, which traditionally means "go," a yellow light, which means you got 30 seconds yet to go, and then a red light, which ends your three minutes. We'll ask you to stop at that point in time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. As we go through the process, as I said at the very onset of the meeting, I apologize in advance for what I'm going to do to your names. It's unintentional. Please correct me for the record when we get you up. And the way that we're going to do this is I'm going to call who's up, and then I'm also going to call who's on deck. So if we can begin to sort of move around so that we can put you as efficiently as we can. All right. We're good to go? Okay, so we're going to go to Joshua Tree, and we're going to start the public testimony there. David Rubenstein is up first, and Darcy Phillips is on deck.
My name is David Rubenstein. My wife and I live in Wonder Valley about two miles from the proposed Wonder Inn site. When we first moved to the area, and we were asking our new neighbors who to call in an emergency, they said, "Call the sheriff. They'll be out in a couple of days." Of course, this is obviously not literally true, but speaks to a truth about Wonder Valley. Wonder Valley does not have adequate public services. Wonder Valley is a rural area of 147 square miles with a population density of about four people per square mile. We're a community with many people who are economically fragile. In 2011, the population of Wonder Valley was 433. In 2020, it had grown to more than 1,000, more than doubling in 10 years. Obviously, an increase in population creates an increased need for public services. However, during that time, not only have our public services not increased, but we lost our fire station. Before the closing of the fire station, emergency response times were about four minutes to our home. Now that they come all the way from 29 Palms, the response times have increased to 15 minutes or more. Brain damage following an acute stroke begins at four to five minutes. House fire doubles in size every minute. From my house, over the last few years, I've seen three houses and two cars completely destroyed by fire while waiting for the fire department to arrive. In the past five years, there have been over 33 structure fires in Wonder Valley that have resulted in a total loss of property. I was recently joking with my neighbor Al that I was going to buy him a siren and a flashing light for his car because so many people were calling him to drive them to the emergency room because they didn't trust that emergency services would get them there in time. Emergency services in Wonder Valley are already inadequate to the needs of the population. The Wonder Inn proposal estimates an additional 220 guests and staff every day. That is a more than 20% increase in the population overnight. That's 20% more people falling in pools and getting hit by rattlesnakes. That's 20% more people becoming dangerously dehydrated because they're not used to the desert climate. That's 20% more people having heart attacks, strokes, and accidentally catching things on fire. And they won't call my neighbor Al. They will have to use our already overtaxed public services. The health and property of our community, of my friends and family, are being put at risk for a project that I believe offers little to no benefit to the residents of Wonder Valley. The countywide plan says, quote, "The county can best serve our communities by focusing new development in and around communities with access to infrastructure and services while preserving natural open spaces that define San Bernardino County in our way of life." And the county policy plan says, quote, "Those who live in unincorporated disadvantaged communities should not be burdened with reduced access to public facilities and services." We do not have adequate fire emergency medical services in Wonder Valley now. The Wonder Inn project will make this problem much, much worse, and the price will be paid in the lives and property of the residents of Wonder Valley. I urge you not to approve of this project. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Next up is Darcy Phillips. Darcy will be followed by Pat Hanigan. Good morning. Introduce yourself, and when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Darcy Phillips. I live in 29 Palms, and I'm going to address the hydrology study. So here are the comments I have. "The potential impact of the Mammoth Wonder Inn Hotel Project and its 120-acre future development on the disadvantaged, low-income community and residents of Wonder Valley is a cause for serious concern. The hydrology and water studies completed by the developers are insufficient to assess the effect of the proposed project on the surrounding area where many residents rely on wells as their sole source of drinking water. The lack of investigation of the potential impact of increased groundwater use on wells in the surrounding area and the initial study's negative declaration is a major oversight. The plundering of the aquifer by illegal marijuana farms may have significantly reduced water levels from the last historical surveys taken between 50 and 70 years ago. A drop in groundwater levels due to the Wonder Inn's increased water usage could have devastating effects on the surrounding community. Redrilling wells is extremely costly and unaffordable for many residents, leaving them potentially without consistent access to drinking water. Wonder Inn's developers attempt to compare the water usage of the Wonder Inn to a fictional pohoba farm is highly speculative, not a legitimate historical baseline, and insufficient to assess the effect of the proposed project on the aquifer water levels. Neither the Wonder Inn developers or the staff report recommending approval have adequately addressed the potential negative impact of this project's water usage on the Dale Basin aquifer and the community that depends upon it. The developers' estimate of water usage also does not include the extensive irrigation needs of the hundreds of plants that are planned and the water features, including the enormous swimming pool mentioned in their design. An environmental impact report, EIR, is needed to adequately assess the potential impact of the Wonder Inn's proposed water usage. An EIR is required to address the complete lack of information on the potential impact of the surrounding community of Wonder Valley Inn, who rely on wells as their primary source of drinking water. Without a thorough assessment of the potential impact of the Wonder Inn's proposed water usage, which is beyond the scale of any historical development in the entire Morongo Basin, the project could have devastating effects on the surrounding community and the sustainable management of the Dale Basin aquifer. I ask you to please deny all permits and approvals and vote "no" on this massive, unsustainable project. Thank you."
Very good. Next up is going to be Pat Hanigan, and Pat is going to be followed by Melinda Fletcher.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Pat Hanigan. I'm a Morongo Basin Conservation Association Director and a biologist. My concern is the presence of desert tortoise on the Wonder Inn site. The initial study states, "No live tortoises, suitable burrows, or signs were observed on the project site during the systematic investigation. The desert tortoise was determined to have a low potential to occur on site." I contacted Ed Leroux of Circle Mountain Biological Consultants and asked for any tortoise data he had for the Wonder Valley area. He shared his April 2020 focus study of the actual Wonder Inn site. The introduction notes that Leroux was contacted by the property owner, Alan Greenberg. Leroux surveyed 40 acres, including the pink building, the pipeline, and adjacent areas out to 400 feet. The positive tortoise evidence included: a subadult desert tortoise, the carcass of an adult tortoise, seven fresh adult tortoise scats, two older adult tortoise scats, 16 fresh scats of subadult tortoises, and two older scats of subadult tortoises. The adult, subadult tortoise was located a half meter from its burrow with no other burrows found. Although this survey included a map and photos, was not submitted by Mr. Greenberg for the project. It is valid. I emailed it to county planner Mr. Khan and others. Mr. Leroux responded to all. "I understand from you that no tortoise sign was found during the survey performed in 2021. I've been surveying for tortoises for 33 years, since 1989, and don't see any way whatsoever that we would find tortoise signs in 2020, and they not persist there one year later in 2021, particularly since there was a wealth of juvenile tortoise signs. Juveniles are an age class that is less likely to travel long distances." Leroux followed the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Tortoise Survey Protocol with two people taking eight hours to survey 40 acres. ELMT Consulting surveyed 130 acres in a day, unstated hours, no protocol described. A recent second survey, no protocol described, also found no tortoise. The initial study states that the location is not within a wildlife corridor. This is incorrect. The project is on California Department of Fish and Wildlife terrestrial significant habitat. Its connectivity rank is number three, connections with implementation flexibility. According to SEQA, there is substantial evidence this project may have significant effects on the environment, and for its protection, an EIR must be prepared. Thank you for your intention.
Very good. Ms. Hanigan, thank you. Next up is Melinda Fletcher. Melinda will be followed by Richard Gray.
Your approval of the project of Wonder Inn will forever change--
Melinda, I need you to introduce yourself, so we got you on the record.
I'm sorry. Melinda Fletcher.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Your approval of the project, Wonder Inn, will forever change the density of our neighborhood. The increased volume of traffic on the two-lane sandy shoulder road will greatly increase the possibility of severe accidents. Even now, it is a favorite for those on their way to Vegas and Laughlin. We have a common aquifer, water that is so precious in our desert community. The proposed site with a large usage of water will affect the aquifer. It may bring in water-- we bring in water to our own home because ours is impossible. We live one and a half miles from the site, and our depth is the same as the proposed Our water is 254 feet deep. We also are concerned about the fact of the lack of fire department in our area. It is our understanding that we do not have a fire department in this area due to the poor quality of the water usage there that they felt not safe in being there. We appreciate your concern, and we ask that you will not approve this proposal. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Next up is Richard Gray. Richard be followed by Alfred, and I think it's Loop. Good morning, sir.
Hi, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine. Introduce yourself, and you've got three minutes.
Hi, my name is Richard Gray. I would like to address what is one of the most egregious impacts on the existing community of people living and visiting the area known as Wonder Valley. As a 25-year-old-- or 25-year mental health therapist, treating some of these residents for a variety of issues, I've found the most common stressor to be what I will term "encroachment." These residents are in near constant fear of nonresidents interrupting the peace and quality of life they have struggled to achieve and maintain. The unavoidable intrusion of the occasional thoughtless or even belligerent neighbor is one thing, but the sense that nonresidents see the complex desert as a blank slate under which they can project their own half-thought-out dreams of financial success at whatever cost to the community is terrifying to the rightful inhabitants. We are not against progress. We are very excited about the progress we've made in Wonder Valley. The artist community, the Palms Restaurant has developed in an organic way, serving the residents. Wonder Valley is scarred with the sad reminder of many failed-to-get-rich-quick schemes, abandoned mines, pohoba farms, and illegal marijuana farms. This will perhaps become another. Thank you. Please vote "no."
Very good. Thank you, sir. Next up is Alfred Loop, and then Larry Lavor.
My name is Alfred Loop, and I want to speak against the proposal. I want you to find my comments to the water quality. When we lost our fire station, the San Bernardino Sentinel wrote the following. Officials said the move was prompted by the results of an analysis done earlier that month on water drawn from the well Fire Station 45 uses. That station is approximately five miles from the site we're talking about. Lab tests showed, the department said, the water was contaminated with arsenic, hexavalent fluorium, and fluoride at levels approaching or exceeding 1,000 times the threshold deemed safe for human use and consumption. The department-- this is the fire department-- and if the fire commissioner wanted to speak to this, I'd love to hear it-- the department said it could not countenance subjecting its firefighting personnel to the health threat that the contamination posed. There were two firefighting personnel at that station at the time, as I remember. Please do not rezone this area as commercial. It should remain rural. Please vote against this proposal.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Next up is Larry Lavor, and Larry will be followed by Kate Short.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Larry Lavor. I'm a property owner in Wonder Valley. I was a plan checker for the city of Irvine for 25 years. After a while, you develop a sense of when more scrutiny of a project is warranted. Here is one example from this project. The applicant has presented a letter from a horticulturist to justify groundwater extraction. Appendix F3. Shouldn't this come from a hydrologist or geologist? The letter does not even reference the correct groundwater basin. The letter references the Joshua Tree Basin and Mesquite Lake Basin. The Wonder Inn will get its water from the Dale Valley Groundwater Basin. The letter references a 2017 report written for the 29 Palms Water District, which does not pull from the Dale Valley Groundwater Basin. So what the argument boils down to is that the Wonder Inn will be using less than the former occupant, who was a farmer, did almost 20 years ago. How is this relevant to current conditions? The applicant has failed to present information from California's Groundwater Update 2020 and from Bulletin 118 on the Dale Valley Groundwater Basin, which was last updated in February 2004 with the last field update in 1979. Bulletin 118 shows annual rainfall of up to six inches in 1961, and we're getting two to four inches per the Groundwater Update 2020. Bulletin 118 states a recharge rate of 900 acre-feet per year in 1975. With the reduced rainfall, that is likely not true anymore. Here's a partial quote from page 59 of the initial study. "Nor does it contain many wells," unquote. And that's referring to Dale Valley Groundwater Basin. There are 227 wells just in the central portion of Wonder Valley alone. That number is from the California Department of Water Resources' Well Completion Map as of March 22, 2023. Average use for a home is one acre foot per year. We need to keep the amount of extraction less than the recharge. Per Bulletin 118, the amount of groundwater and storage is unknown. The Wonder Inn will use about four times as much water than the same amount of property developed as RL5. Since the primary zoning is residential, shouldn't present and future residential homes have priority? Remember, new homes are required to drill a well. I would respectfully request the commission not to approve the project. Also, it just occurred to me, the well being on a remote property, isn't there some kind of right-of-access easement issue? Should either of the properties be sold at a later date? Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Next up is Kate Short, and Kate will be followed-- I'm sorry, I can't get the first name here, but it's Hamburg is the second name. Good morning. Introduce yourself, and you've got three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Kate Short, and I live in Wonder Valley. And I also want to mention that I'm an arts organizer for an organization called Mojave Sound Art in Wonder Valley. The California Environmental Quality Act requires environmental justice to be included in the initial studies for projects being evaluated under SEQA. Per former California Attorney General Kamala Harris, human beings are an integral part of the environment. An agency is required to find that a project may have a significant effect on the environment if, among other things, the environmental effects of the project will cause substantial adverse effects on human beings, either directly or indirectly. There is no mention of the Wonder Valley community nor any community descriptors in the initial study, nor in the 895 pages of analysis reports and information included in the appendices. People are part of the environment, and this project will have significant impact upon our rural and underserved community, especially for people living here full-time, such as myself. At minimum, the character of our community will be significantly impacted and devalued by the addition of this large luxury hotel and event space. Our quality of life will be dramatically changed, and not for the better. And at worst, our safety will be at risk, and lives and property will be lost due to the increased demand upon our already insufficient public services in this underserved community, including fire and emergency services. Further, Kamala Harris, former California AG, said, "The Attorney General is particularly concerned that land use, planning, and permitting decisions consider and address any additional burdens on environmental justice communities." The San Bernardino County Policy Plan 2020 states, Policy HZ-3.18, applicant requirements. In order for a planning project application to be deemed complete, we require applicants to indicate whether the project is within, adjacent to, or nearby an unincorporated environmental justice focus area. And if so, to document to the county's satisfaction how an applicant will address environmental justice concerns potentially created by the project. Wonder Valley is an unincorporated environmental justice focus area, being a sparsely populated, high-poverty area. I request that this project be denied, or at minimum, a full environmental impact report be done to this study in the critical areas of environmental justice. And I speak for myself and for my organization, my arts organization. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Next up-- again, I apologize, I can't make the first name, but Hamburg looks like the second and on deck. Can you help me?
Eric Hamburg.
Eric. Nah. Mr. Hamburg, when you're ready, you have three minutes. And Mr. Hamburg will be followed by Hallie Kahn Levine. Sir, when you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Eric Hamburg. I've owned a home in Wonder Valley for 22 years. I'm a full-time resident there for the past eight years. I represent the Stop Wonder Inn project. Most of our speakers here are in Joshua Tree intentionally to help comply with the county's greenhouse gas ordinance. We appreciate its availability. We responded to the initial study with facts in our 187-page document. We have reviewed the staff report. That report, to say the least, gives short shrift to our factual concerns. Today, you will hear our comments on some of the SEQA factors. Here, I'll recap our transportation concerns. The report ignores our comments regarding dust and road damage generated by traffic to and from the proposed development on Gamma Road. The proposal would introduce new traffic hazards at the Amboy and Gamma intersection. The report ignores that. I and many residents experience frequent unsafe driving behaviors exacerbated by road hazards on Amboy Road. We have witnessed traffic accidents and near misses close to the site. This is ignored in the report. We asked for an EIR due to these concerns, but the report's public comments requesting an EIR section omits transportation. But centrally, there is the overriding land use concern. The report ignores Land Use Element 4.5, that a development should be consistent with and reinforce the physical and historical character and identity of our unincorporated communities. We hope you have seen the map and video we submitted that shows the huge footprint of this proposal in the whole context of Wonder Valley. The developers have not made a compelling case that the proposal would be consistent with and reinforce Wonder Valley's physical and historical character and identity. Yes, there is an ongoing tension in the desert between development and preservation. Our factual submissions opposing this proposal demonstrate that preservation should win out here. We want what people who have chosen to live in and visit Wonder Valley have always wanted: space, healthy air, quiet tranquility, and to enjoy the dark skies. Do not open the door to even further inevitable and ruinous development there. Because all of our factual objections, at a minimum, a full EIR should be ordered, but in totality, we ask that the commission deny the developers' applications. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you, sir. Next up is Hallie Cohen Levine, and Hallie will be followed by Russell Cohen.
Good morning, Planning Commission. My name is Hallie Cohen Levine, and I'm here today as a board member of the Desert Tortoise Council. The council was established in 1975 and has been comprised of leading desert tortoise experts in the field ever since. The Mojave Desert Tortoise-- or Auguste's Desert Tortoise is among the top 50 species on the list of the world's most endangered tortoises and freshwater turtles. It is one of three turtle and tortoise species in the U.S. to be critically endangered. This status, in part, prompted the council to join Defenders of Wildlife and Desert Tortoise Preserve Committee to petition the California Fish and Game Commission in March 2020 to elevate the listing of the Mojave Desert Tortoise from threatened to endangered in California. The council would like to emphasize, based on our collective experience, knowledge, and expertise, that tortoises will be impacted if this development is approved to proceed. Several board members are intimately familiar with the area and of the steady decline of the Morongo Basin's population of wild desert tortoises in particular. I want to point out in the project's initial study that the surveyor used meandering transex on 135 acres in only one day. This simply doesn't add up. We wonder about the qualifications of the biologists who conducted this survey. The lack of information provided in the initial study is absolutely appalling. And if this ill-thought-out development is allowed to move forward, then at the very least, a comprehensive EIR must be conducted, with qualified surveyors, according to California Fish and Wildlife qualifications, and transparent methods must be provided. Finally, I want to note that the applicant's presentation demonstrates that they are more concerned about themselves, their motives, and their interests. They have failed to clearly respond to our comments, including concerns about endangered tortoises. I heard the applicant mention experts on his team. Where are they? Anyone with any tangible expertise on desert tortoises has vocalized opposition to the project as it currently stands. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you. Next up is going to be Russell Cohen, and Russell's going to be followed by Evan Rosauki? I'm sorry, Evan. I apologize. Sir, when you're ready.
Can you restart? My name is Russ Cohen. I am a resident of 29 Palms. Most of my adult life, I've worked construction. For 29 years, I was a registered deputy building inspector licensed by various jurisdictions and licensing entities. I worked on the largest projects in California, was lead inspector on most of the projects for over half of my career, and I'm very familiar with building and planning and development codes, CDC, OFPOT regulations, and the requirements that are associated with each of these jurisdictionals and their codes, as well as many others. In the written comments that I submitted, as well as in the Stop Wonder Inn group package, facts were stated by myself and my colleagues in relation to the SEQA questions and requirements, and the county policy plan, county policy plan and land use elements, and their guidelines and requirements. Item by item, the facts were presented and proven in our comments to the initial study. There are at least nine land use elements that do not meet the requirements or intent of each of these elements and do not have and have not been adequately rebutted and updated in the staff report. The applicant's and staff report did not fully consider our comments as required by SEQA, and many of these land use elements are requirements that have not been met and could never be met. In my years of professional experience, if I brought a requirement that has not been meant to the attention of a contractor or engineer or building official, they were aware of the absoluteness of a requirement and understood that any work or approvals could not proceed without complying with these requirements. It was understood that the only way to proceed would be to comply. So I asked why the applicants have been allowed to proceed with this proposed project when they do not comply with many of the land use elements or SEQA requirements. But aside from all the SEQA and county policy plan requirements and elements that have not been met, I still cannot get my head around the fact that this huge proposed Wonder Inn even got this far. In the entirety of Wonder Valley, there is no potable water, no septic system, no wastewater treatment, a dangerous two-lane highway and dirt roads, and no public services whatsoever. How could any planning department approve a project where the land itself cannot support it? This is Basic Planning 101. All city planners, county planners should know this basic tenet, and this from County Policy Plan Land Use Element, Page 1, Principles. New development should be focused in areas where there is potable water, wastewater treatment, roadways, and public services. None of this exists in Wonder Valley. Wonder Valley is a disadvantaged, unincorporated community. The proposed Wonder Inn should not be considered for approval based on the many facts we've proven in the comment letters. Please deny all CUP applications. Please deny the zoning change from RL to CS, and please do not approve the use of this beautiful desert for this out-of-place project. for this out-of-place project, which this land cannot support. Thank you.
Very well, thank you, sir. Next up is Evan, and you can help me with your last name. And Evan is going to be followed by Glenn Cohen.
Evan Rosowski, Wonder Valley resident, mile and a quarter away from the place. And maybe the need for an environmental impact report, EIR, for Wonder Inn project is highlighted by the potential impact of the large septic system that will have to be constructed to support a complex of this size. While the Wonder Inn report mentions a septic system, they fail to provide any details in the size and the environmental impact of what it might be, large commercial septic system. A public record request revealed that developer submitted a percolation report for a 20-room project, much smaller in scale to the current 106 Hotel, the San Bernardino Health and Safety. The submittal was subsequently rejected, and as of today, neither updated the percolation report or septic system. Design has been shared with or approved by San Bernardino County Agency. An EIR is absolutely necessary to investigate whether a planned septic system for the Wonder Inn Hotel would have a negative impact on the environment, public health, and groundwater. The report would provide additional details on the size of environmental impact in proposed septic system and the evaluation of potential hazard it poses to the underground water system. The information enabled the local authorities to make informed decisions regarding the project and take the appropriate measures to protect the environment and public health. Additional proposed implements of the Stormwater Pollution Plan, SWPP, is too vague. The given potential presence of soil contamination, Stormwater and Plan dissolved. Plan proposed the wastewater to recharge the aquifer and indirectly result in the pollution of groundwater if the contracted water supply is pumped into an area where it's already contaminated local, which this site has industrial use history, which is downplayed by both the developer and the reports here. Therefore, an IER should be investigated for the potential hazard association in SWPP and provide appropriate measures to mediate and advise effects on environmental, community, and groundwater. In conclusion, the Wonder Inn project needs an IER to adequately assess the potential of the impact, the Pro Setec system, the SWPP, and environmental community, and groundwater, and the project not be approved for environmental impact. On a different note, they say the general public. 1994 Federal Hospitality Act, which will make them have safety, allows basically them to exclude locals. And so, they could easily say this could not be part of our community. In California rights, basically say they could say race, but not location. Country of origin, you're allowed, but they can say where you live, you're not allowed. And that's basically 1994 Hospitality Act. And you could Google it, and you'll find it both liberal and conservative sources of news reports have mentioned that source of information. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Glenn Cohen. And on deck is Renro Packer.
Hi, good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Gina Cone. For over 18 years, my family has owned, rehabbed, and loved a 396-square-foot jackrabbit homestead cabin on five acres off Gamma Road in Wonder Valley, where many tortoises, young and old, have been seen. The public comments submitted cite the San Bernardino Countywide LU4 goal, preservation and enhancement of unique community identities and their relationship with the natural environment, as well as Policy LU 4.5. We require that new development be consistent with and reinforce the physical and historical character and identity of our unincorporated communities, as described in Table LU3 and in the values section of the Wonder Valley Community Action Guide. The staff report failed to recognize the submitted comments as they state our concerns are speculative. Who are the experts who decide what is the community identity of Wonder Valley? Who decides the valued aesthetic element? Is it the community members and people, of which multi-generations have lived for over a century? Or is it the developers who purchased this property three years ago during a pandemic that have no understanding of rural desert living, nor have a connection to our community? The applicants have not fully considered our comments, which is a requirement of SEQA. Residents know what is aesthetic and what they are looking at. If it wasn't for the aesthetic appeal of this region, there would be no interest of a Wonder Inn wanting to be built here. Again, the residents' experience and expertise should be considered in accordance to the requirements of SEQA. The proposal, conversion of the existing pink building to a restaurant lobby, and 106 guest rooms, which really sounds easier to digest than a 42,120-square-foot hotel, a 5,031-square-foot conference room, a 4,666-square-foot wellness center, and additional structures on a 24.4-acre site, which is just slightly less than half of Knott's Berry Farm, which is 57 acres. Resort-style amenities that have been described already in detail, the 6,300-square-foot humongous swimming pool, water features, bar, spa, sauna, multipurpose tent, fitness tent, locker rooms, meeting space. It can go on. So how out-of-place and damaging this resort would be for Wonder Valley? As stated in the initial study and staff report, because of the open design concept where buildings are spaced out, the heights of the buildings are similar to two-story buildings. The proposed project would blend seamlessly into the surrounding area, similar to the scattered large lot residences. No revisions to the initial study are required as a result of the comments received on this topic. Please, commissioners, we hope you hear the facts and the community and firmly reject this proposal.
Very well, thank you. Next up, Renro Packer, followed by Elizabeth Wheeler.
Good morning, Planning Commission. Thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity. My name is Remo Packer, resident of Wonder Valley. Thank you very much for the opportunity to take on public comments. It's my understanding that there was over 350 responses submitted in writing to this. And yet, as other people have said, it doesn't seem as though there's been a lot of consideration taken. My biggest concern is, once you get this foot in the door to allow a commercial entity of this scope, what is going to happen next? How many other people will you allow to have this happen? I agree with the other respondents, and I ask you, please, to not approve this project, and I yield my time. Thank you.
Very well, thank you. Next up is Elizabeth Wheeler. And Elizabeth will be followed by Yolanda Brown.
Hello, Commissioner, Land Commissioner, and thank you so much for taking this time for... Thank you. I wanted to say, first of all, the one that came before with the orange grove that's going to be turned into a 200,000-square-foot warehouse. I wanted to applaud all of you for taking the time to say, what about the orange groves? And what about, you know, the palm trees that are known in redlands? That kind of attitude I appreciate because in Wonder Valley, we're going to need it. What we have right now is, as everyone has said, an amazing place on earth. It's enchanting. And if any of you haven't been here, I would highly recommend you taking a trip out to Wonder Valley. What I would like to know is, if we can spend that same amount of time with this, we don't need a convention center out here in Wonder Valley, which is what this is going to be. If it was in Palm Springs, Orange County even, wherever. But Wonder Valley does not feed into this kind of design. Originally, it was supposed to be a 20-room cute little place to go out in the desert. And I'm not sure what happened or what clicked between the developers to go to this massive, out-of-scale development. But I would totally encourage the EIR study to be conducted, a deep dive into what this will look like in the future. And I appreciate what you're doing as far as letting these developers know that, yeah, they may not be there forever, but that land, if it so deems it larger, we could have some... I don't even want to think about what could be there. This is scary enough. I want to thank you again for your time, Elizabeth Wheeler, against the Wonder Inn. Thank you.
Ms. Wheeler, thank you. Next up is Yolanda Brown. And Yolanda Brown, Damon Z, I think is on deck. Good morning. If you'd introduce yourself, you've got three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Yolanda Brown. And as tempted as I am to directly reply to Jason's opening statement, my comment is about traffic accidents as related to emergency medical services in the public services area of SEQA. San Bernardino County Fire Station 44 in 29 Palms shares coverage of a service area from 29 Palms east to the Arizona border, with approximately 140 miles and over two hours' travel time between 29 Palms and Needles. This is a huge service area. Amboy Road is a county scenic route, and it's a common route for people traveling to Amboy crater, the Mojave Preserve, and Las Vegas, as well as a route to get to Interstate 40 through Letlow and Kelbaker Road. Highway 62 is a common route for people traveling to the Colorado River recreational areas of Parker Dam, Lake Havasu, et cetera, as well as a route to connect with Highway 177 South to Interstate 10. Amboy and Highway 62 are the only eastbound routes out of the Morongo Basin. The travel area of 29 Palms is desolate, and traffic accidents are fairly common. According to San Bernardino County Fire Protection website, there were 363 traffic collisions in our Division IV South Desert region in the seven months between July 1, 2022, and January 31, 2023. This is roughly 1.8 accidents every day. Traveling at a high rate of speed is common on the open roads outside of populated areas, which contributes to traffic accidents. Our local San Bernardino County Fire Station 44 provides emergency responses for all the roads and highways from 29 Palms to Needles. Where any study is done to evaluate traffic volume on Amboy Road and Highway 62 from 29 Palms to Needles and the Colorado River, which is the area within our service zone, the proposed Wonder Inn estimates an increase in traffic of 604 additional vehicle trips daily. For roadways in the city with over 55 vehicle trips per day, this may not be impactful. But for Amboy, our little two-lane country road, this increase of traffic will make a significant impact. We currently do not have adequate public services to support the increased demand that this project would impose. At this time, I urge you to deny this project, or at a minimum, require a full environmental impact report be done prior to considering this project. Thank you so much.
Very well, thank you. Damon Z will be followed by Adrian Field.
Hi, my name is Damari Satarain. I'm a resident of Joshua Tree. I feel a Wonder Inn development project would be detrimental to lives, to all lives and the environment of the Wonder Valley area. Wonder Valley is a small community known for rural charm. The Wonder Inn directly opposes this by injecting urban atmosphere to an area that cannot support developments of this magnitude. The Mojave Basin is already being deeply affected by other developments of this nature, such as Auto Camp Joshua Tree, as well as the many short-term rentals currently affecting our communities by limiting our natural resources, boxing in our neighbors, alienating the residents, and creating a housing disparity for said residents. On top of this, the project will increase demand for residents to be employed at the site, for which we do not currently have adequate housing due to the aforementioned housing crisis. This is not only affecting the humans, but also the native animals, plants, and overall environment that our beautiful desert is known for, the ultimate reason we live here and have a national park that is dedicated to ensuring the wonder is preserved, the wonders preserved. Developments like the Wonder Inn will only damage the livelihoods and ecosystem for the sake of profits. I urge the county to oppose this motion based on the facts presented by the beautiful residents here today. Thank you.
Very well, thank you. Next up is Adrian Field. And Adrian will be followed by Martine Osendorp. Sir, when you're ready?
Okay, commissioners, thank you for your time today and for my incredibly short, three-minute opportunity to push back on years of preparation by the developer and his impressive collection of contractors who carefully organized data and PR for this project. The developers of Wonder Inn project have already inferred that community responses to their reams of scientific data have no basis in science or fact, or, as they put it, on merely speculation without evidence. Unfortunately, the information in the very same initial study document presented by the Wonder Inn group contains much of the same speculation without evidence. The initial study document presented by the developer really does contain many inconsistencies, missing data, vague suppositions, and that is, I'm sorry to say, a fact. The detailed and impressive response by the community, and by community, I mean the folks who actually live and care for Wonder Valley, and who spend hours meticulously combing through masses of documents in a ridiculously short amount of time. That same community submitted proof that the initial study document presented by the developer was woefully inadequate. The community has shown that the initial study document contains many inconsistencies and poor research. Much of the initial study response by the developer takes a straw man approach, where inconsequential or imprecise arguments are remedied and checked off as either no impact or less than significant impact. The truth is that the potentially serious environmental failings of the plan presented in the environmental checklist are glossed over or buried in spurious red herrings. The community has already submitted and clearly outlined the facts and issues in their over 370 responses to the initial study. These are not emotional or uninformed responses, as you can probably tell, as some would have believed, but carefully considered exploration of facts born from familiarity with the conditions, the community, and the environment of Wonder Valley. The community has made the case. We have done our due diligence. Against all odds, we have submitted our findings, and our findings are that there is significant and factual cause for concern with this project. It is for our representatives to deeply understand the issues that the community has brought forward. To be clear, the area we are talking about is a truly valuable, historical, and impressive ecological resource found in very few places on the planet. Those are facts. I also think that close and special attention should be paid to what the community that actually lives in Wonder Valley has to say. There is no do-over, no going back. The very least that this project requires is a serious environmental impact review before continuing on. Thank you again for your time, commissioners.
Very well, thank you, sir. Next up is Martine Osendorp. And Martine will be followed by Marguerite Osendorp.
Thank you, Adrian. My name is Martin Ostenor. Good morning, commissioners. I'm a Wonder Valley homeowner and resident. I live one mile north of the proposed project with a direct, sunny, heated view on the lot. To me, the loss of dark sky from this large, concentrated development, ignoring the sewage requirements for the project, minimizing the safety and health aspects of well water, the quite predictable increase of dust with its negative health impacts, as well as the increase in unwanted noise, not only at the site but beyond, are giving me great pause. Dark sky and quiet are amongst the main reasons people come, live, and visit this part of the Mojave Desert. It is a source of income for many residents that can be easily lost by introduction of large-scale developments like this project. Noise in Wonder Valley carries far. During the day, almost every day, one can hear small birds tweet and chirp. Occasionally, one hears an owl's hoot. Hopefully not too often, one hears a snake's rattle. And almost every day, the wind rustles over the sand. Evenings and nights are quiet, very quiet. Regularly, one can hear the coyotes singing while looking at that starry, dark sky. This project will bring a lot of unwanted noise, more traffic on Amboy, cars, trucks, and motorcycles pulling in, pulling out of the 210-plus spots parking lot. Visitors to 106, two-to-four-people rooms in this reason- Visitors to one hundred and six, two to four people rooms in these resorts. Visitors to the restaurant, day and night visitors, to the six thousand three hundred square foot swimming pool. Visitors to large events or conferences that the developers have in mind in the over thirteen thousand square foot of common use covered area. At sixty percent occupation, this development would have some one hundred and twenty-seven people staying there any given day, probably with some sixty cars. Peak room occupation would be over four hundred people with a hundred cars. Events may bring even more than that. Hotel and event visitors that will venture out in their own cars onto Wonder Valley. Wonder Valley's mainly unpaved roads maintained and paved for by the residents. Getting lost, getting onto private property, driving within the official speed limit, but even then, causing dust and noise. Visitors bringing or renting off-road vehicles, knowing or not knowing where to go. Getting off-road indeed, causing even more nuisance, dust, and noise. Members of the Planning Commission, Mr. Weldy, Mr. Slowick, Mr. Stoffel, Mr. Gongora, Mrs. The Mercy, absent, I'm confident that you will see this project as not right for Wonder Valley and that you will make the right decision.
Okay, next up is Marguerite Osendorpe. And Marguerite will be followed by Gary Tuffel.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Margaret Osendorpe. I live in Wonder Valley, one mile to the north of the proposed project. I'm going to address air quality. From my back door, I look directly at the proposed site. I have compromised lungs, asthma, and chronic respiratory issues. I left the pollution of city living for health reasons, just as early homesteaders who after World War One settled the area to heal from lung damage. Living in Wonder Valley, I can take walks close to my home without getting sick as I did in the city. And I don't have to stay indoors and keep my windows shut for most of the days of the year when the air in the city was dangerous for someone like me. Exposure to two-point-five particulate pollution is bad for those of us who have respiratory and heart ailments. They get into one's bloodstream, sinuses, and lungs, leading to lung problems, dementia, and hypertension. According to the state of California, environmental justice, which must be considered under Sequoia, calls for fairness, meaning, quote, "The benefits of a healthy environment should be available to everyone and that the burdens of pollution should not be focused on sensitive populations," end quote. The county states it will ensure good air quality for its residents, businesses, and visitors in order to reduce the impact on human health and the economy. This project will impact our health, and when human health is impacted, so is the economy. Project developers admit that traffic on Amboy will increase. Exhaust from vehicles on roads paved or not contains two-point-five particulate pollution and ammonia. And when mixed together, health impacts are further exacerbated. The claim by developers that only paved roads will be used by guests are not facts but speculation. Wonder Valley has a hundred and eighty-seven dirt roads. Who will stop Wonder Inn residents from exploring them? Undisturbed desert crust will not blow in the wind, but the disturbed desert crust will. This project during and after construction will disturb desert crust. The proposed dust control mitigation spraying with water will not work. Finally, Sequoia intends to afford the fullest possible protection to the environment. If there is substantial evidence that supports a fair argument that the project may have a significant impact on the environment, an EIR is required, even if a case is made in evidence that the project will not have a significant impact. We implore on the commission to reject this project or at the very least require an EIR. Thank you very much.
Very well, thank you. Next up is Gary Tuffel and Gary will be followed by Pocket Tuskani.
My name is Gary Tuffel and I live in Wonder Valley. The Wonder Inn will increase demand upon public services. In recent years, Wonder Valley has seen a significant increase in population. In twenty thirteen, Wonder Valley population was estimated to be four hundred thirty-three. In the twenty twenty census, Wonder Valley population was estimated to be one thousand and nineteen, more than doubling in ten years. There are a few reasons for the recent upward trends. First, tourism has substantially increased at Joshua Tree National Park, having increased from one point four million visitors in twenty twelve to well over three million visitors per year in twenty twenty-two. As tourism surges at the park, the desert region has become California's hottest housing market. And simultaneous simultaneous to the increase of tourism to the park, short-term rentals exploded upon the scene. Beginning in roughly twenty twelve, numerous properties, including some uninhabited or abandoned properties in Wonder Valley, were being purchased, renovated, and turned into STRs. There are currently an estimated sixty active STRs in Wonder Valley. And note, the many guests that enjoy these short-term rentals are not included in the population count used to estimate the public services needed to safely cover Wonder Valley. In addition, property prices are low in Wonder Valley. The median home price in California is eight hundred thirty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. The median home price in Wonder Valley is a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Many people who have been priced out of their former neighborhoods have migrated to Wonder Valley where one can buy a home on five acres for less than the price of rent in the city. For example, the average rent in California was two thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars a month in twenty twenty-two. A mortgage payment on a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars is roughly nine hundred dollars per month. Lastly, during the two years of isolating at home during the pandemic, many people shifted to telecommuting and are now able to live full-time in this rural area and maintain and maintain employment. An increase in population creates a need to increase public services. However, during the time the population of Wonder Valley was rising, the Wonder Valley Fire Station was closed in twenty seventeen and our fire and paramedic response now comes from the city of Twenty-Nine Palms. This geographical change increased our response times to dangerous lengths. We currently do not have adequate public services for our community, especially fire and paramedic services, resulting in numerous homes burning to the ground due to insufficient fire response. The addition of the proposed Wonder Inn will further increase the burden upon Wonder Valley's already stressed public services. This proposal estimates a hundred and sixty daily guests, forty visitors, and twenty staff. That is an additional two hundred and twenty people added to our existing population of one thousand nineteen, increasing demand for services in our area by over twenty percent. Wonder Valley simply does not have the infrastructure nor the public services to support this new development. I urge you to deny this project or at minimum require a full environmental impact report before considering this project. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Very well, thank you. Next up is Pocket Tuskani and again, I apologize, Pocket will be followed by Tonalisa Rugas.
Hi, my name is Pocket Tuskani and I'm a resident of Wonder Valley. My concern is about the extra burden and cost for maintaining our local roads that this luxury resort would bring to the residents of Wonder Valley. Wonder Valley has two hundred and eighty-nine roads that total a hundred and seventy-five miles. Of these two hundred and eighty-nine roads, only five are paved. The remaining two hundred and eighty-four roads are dirt or sand roads. Only forty-six miles of the roads in Wonder Valley are paved. I told you that. That's right. Good. I'm glad you're listening. The roads, the roads in Wonder Valley are maintained by property taxes collected and and are fifty dollars and thirty-nine cents per parcel. The taxes per parcel, regardless of the size of the parcel. So once the Wonder Inn owners consolidate their parcels, they will be paying the same property taxes we do, I do, for only for only a five-acre plot. This project estimates an additional four hun- I'm sorry, six hundred and four daily trips, which will accelerate the deterioration of the Wonder Valley roads, especially impacting Amboy roads, Godwin roads, and Gammel roads. The accelerated breakdown will require more frequent road maintenance and repair. Gammel Road runs north and south and is a link between Amboy Road and Highway sixty-two. This is a direct route between the proposed Wonder Inn site and Highway sixty-two. This section of Gammel is a dirt road, is a sand road, and would need to be paved to accommodate the increased visitors traveling from this resort hotel to Joshua Tree National Park. Have any traffic studies been done to on this project? What is the cost to pave this two-mile stretch of dirt road and maintain it? Will the cost paving of Gammel Road be passed on to the tax-paying property owners? All good questions. I am concerned about the possibility of poverty tourism, that is, guests of this luxury hotel and spa wanting to explore the neighborhood and to see how the other half live, which would stress our already fragile dirt roads. Wonder Valley is listed as a high-poverty area, over twenty-two percent of residents living in poverty. Many can't afford the increased taxes to support these luxury resort hotel. You know, come on. I request that a full environmental impact report be done in order to adequately evaluate the impact this luxury resort will have upon our roads in this community. Thank you, Commissioner, Commission, Commissioners, and listen, I urge you to vote no. Listen to the people. Thank you. Power to the people.
Very good. Thank you. Next up, I think it's Tonalisa Rugas and she'll be followed by Jeffrey Barrett.
Hello, my name is Tonalisa Rugas and I live in Joshua Tree, California since the last ten years or so. And I want to talk about law and ordinance, so and I'm just going to comment on one land use element policy in particular, the LU six-point-three. So I'm quoting, "We will only approve land use plan amendments that would introduce new commercial areas in the context of a comprehensive land use plan amendment. We may waive this requirement when the proposed amended area abuts an existing or designated commercial area and the amount of land available for new commercial area uses falls below fifteen percent of the total commercially designated land in the area." So the proposed project abuts to an existing service commercial zone, three-point-eighteen acres. The amount of land developers have applied to change from RL five zone to CS zone is twenty-two-point-eighteen acres. The total commercially designed land in the area is three-point-one-eight acres. New commercial use must fall, yeah, well, I said that, no, sorry. New commercial use must fall between zero point forty-eight acres, which is fifteen percent of three-point-eighteen. And the proposed change of RL five to CS zoning of twenty-two-point-eighteen acres far exceeds the fifteen percent of the total commercially designed land in the area. Therefore, a comprehensive land use plan amendment is required by law for the proposed Wonder Inn, yet nobody has has ever seen it so far. So the rebuttal of this policy, LU six-point-three, by the applicants in the staff report reads as follows. The proposed amendment does not introduce new commercial areas, rather expands on existing commercial area. The proposed amendment expands the commercially zoned property into a more comforting size from three-point-eighteen acres to approximately twenty-four-point-four acres. This is their entire answer, and that's typical of how they are they are answering rebutted questions. Yes, they are expanding the existing commercial area into a more comforting size from three-point-eighteen to twenty-four-point-four acres. That's an increase of eight hundred percent. Did they not read this land use element? The element states that if the new development falls between fifteen percent of the local commercially designed land in the area, then a land use amendment is not required. Again, that is fifteen percent of three-point-eighteen, which equals zero-point-forty-eight acres. A comprehensive land use amendment is required by law. Where is it? That should be required by them to 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 give. Also, as a last comment for the to the applicants, the fact that they in their in their presentation refer to the high desert in Wonder Valley as barren shows how woefully little they know about the flora, the fauna, and the area in general. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Jeffrey Barrett and Jeffrey will be followed by Luke Basalto. Basulto? Good morning.
Commissioners, my name is Jeffrey Barrett. As a resident of Wonder Valley, I'm here to voice my opposition to the Wonder Inn project and its current plan and design. I am opposed, not for opposition's sake, but because I feel it would have a negative impact on the community and its natural real authenticity. I take issue with the preemptive attempt by the residents to paint a picture that residents who are opposed to the Wonder Inn are not open to new ideas. What there is opposition to is this project as it is planned, not all projects forever. The current allowed zoning use of the property for a smaller project makes more sense and would be more in harmony with the area, for example. The project is planned would be a major anomaly in the Wonder Valley area, and I have major concerns regarding the resources it will use, as well as what appears to be inadequate studies by the developers to date and possible future development plans of the surrounding properties conveyed by my wife and informed fellow Wondarians here today. The developers are not members of the community and do not reside here even seasonally. I appreciate their expressed love of the desert. It is the one thing we all have in common, and it is because of that love that myself and my community are here today opposing this proposed use of this land. Those of us who live here also have and have had visions in our own lives, inspired by the raw and authentic nature of this amazing place and the incredible community we found here. We have chosen to live here as those before us have, in harmony with the environment as best we can. At the very least, barring the recommendation by the Planning Commission to not allow this project to move forward, I respectfully respectfully request the project to be recommended to go through a full environmental impact review. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Next up is Luke and I believe Chris Clark is on deck.
Good morning. Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to comment today. My name is Luke Basulto and I carry a few labels. California Desert Program Manager for the National Parks Conservation Association, lifelong Mojave Desert resident and current resident of Joshua Tree, dad, and most recently, and the hat I am wearing to convey my comments today, founder of Saving Slowpoke, a local organization and grassroots effort to inform the public about our Mojave Desert tortoise and inspire those people to advocate for their protection. I have worked in this desert as a field person for over fifteen years, over half of my life. I've spent countless hours learning from and about this place and learning what I could do to help save it so that someday my daughter can experience it the way that I have. Part of my work experience includes performing land surveys and biological inventories for our local land trust, as well as tortoise surveys for their permanent in holdings here in the Morongo Basin. I did these under the supervision and guidance of Ed Leroux, a seasoned and well-respected tortoise biologist and the owner of Circle Mountain Biological, whose survey yielded a live tortoise and other tortoise sign on this property in twenty twenty. On February thirteenth of this year, a nice warm day following a light shower, rain shower, I took it upon myself to walk along the public right of way that tracts this property, namely via Aronosa Road, to see if I could see any tortoises tempted out to the road by the potential for a drink. I was inspired to take a look after reading the survey report done by Circle Mountain Biological and seeing Mr. Leroux's findings and well-respected opinion of the area as viable tortoise habitat. As I walked through this beautiful creosote scrub dotted with huge native grasses and cryptobiotic soil crusts, I scanned the landscape as I have done countless times elsewhere in search of tortoises until my eyes met one at the base of a creosote, less than forty feet from the road, but within a stone's throw of the development site, well within sight of the pink building. It was a tortoise about six months old, hatched last autumn, that had occupied our old ground squirrel burrow to make it through the winter. This is that tortoise, new to life and facing the destruction of its home. This is not only evidence of an individual tortoise living in this area, but more importantly, it is concrete evidence of a viable reproductive population. The mere existence of this young tortoise places the validity of and of the more recent survey conducted by ELMT into question. With people comes their garbage, and with that garbage comes the raven, one of the tortoise's greatest threats. With hatchlings in this area, it is vitally important to limit the reasons for ravens to accumulate. That means sticking up for our desert and its rural communities and saying no to this detrimental and dishonest project and projects like it. Please require this developer to conduct a full environmental assessment of the area with reputable tortoise surveyors, or better yet, just say no to it today. Thank you.
Very well, thank you. Next up is Chris Clark and Chris will be followed by Dana Torrens.
Morning Commissioners, my name is Chris Clark. I am Ruth Hammett, Associate Director of the California Desert Program for the National Parks Conservation Association, which is a national organization with approximately one point nine million members at this point, several hundred thousand of whom are in California, working to defend our national parks and monuments nationwide. I'm also the founder and co-host of the Ninety Miles from Needles podcast, which is devoted to desert protection and which had a recent episode in which we covered, among other things, Mr. Basulto's discovery of that baby tortoise. It's worth- It's worth a listen. I wanted to talk about the implications of the fact that tortoises objectively occur in a reproductive population, perhaps on, but certainly near the site. The California Endangered Species Act and the Federal Endangered Species Act require incidental take permits for projects like Wonder Inn that are taking place in viable tortoise habitat with tortoises present nearby, even if no tortoises occur on the site. As we heard earlier from Ms. Flanagan and the report by Ed Leroux in Circle Mountain, it seems unlikely that tortoises do not occur on the site, but even if they are not on the site, incidental take permits are going to be required. The federal ESA requires the creation of a habitat conservation plan for private landowners who apply for incidental take permits for protected species such as the tortoise. This in and of itself is enough reason for the county to bounce this back to land use services and require that a full EIR is, is prepared. It certainly is enough reason for a court to order that that be done. I think, I think we'd all prefer that it be done voluntarily on the county's part. It's in the best interests of everyone concerned, including the proponent. I have other comments that I'll make, but I'll, I'll limit it to that. You have, you've seen, you've seen my neighbors and, and other desert residents coming together with a fairly unified voice today. Even the proponent referred to the overwhelming sentiment against the project. Just the fact that you get this many people from Wonder Valley and the nearby desert agreeing on anything is remarkable, and I, I hope you keep that in mind. Please either reject this project or insist on a full EIR. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next up is Dana Torrens. Dana will be followed by Aiden Koch.
Hello Commissioners, my name is Dana Torrens. I'm a resident of Wonder Valley. Thank you for this opportunity to share our concerns about this proposed project today. I would like to state simply that it seems highly prudent that a complete environmental impact report be completed in relation to the Wonder Inn project. The precedent set by not demanding such an approach seems highly irresponsible in regards to this project and future projects in the area. I respectfully request that a complete EIR be demanded and that you not approve this project and change the zoning from rural living to commercial as proposed. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you. Next up is Aiden Koch, and Aiden will be followed by John Tally Jones.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Aiden Koch, and I'm a resident of the Morongo Basin. And recently I was speaking with a friend who does field biology work down in the Coachella Valley, and we were noting the difference down there to living up in the, the high desert. And one thing she mentioned was that people go to the low desert for the climate and people come to the high desert for the desert. And I think seeing a project like Wonder Inn, it seems to seek to undermine that sense of desert that people have come here for. That has brought so many people to this particular community of Wonder Valley, and it's irrational to say that the proposed Wonder Inn will not have a permanent and damaging effect on this desert. The infringement of light and sound pollution, pools and plumbing for 100 rooms, 200 plus people, pulling from the delicate communal aquifer, and construction interrupting proven Mojave Desert habitat. If this project were simply the current commercial zoning footprint, I wouldn't be here. But I do not believe that this project should be considered as is not appropriate for the scale of the community or current zoning. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you. Next up is John Tally Jones, and Mr. Jones will be followed by Kavner Walpete. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm John Tally Jones of 29 Palms and Wonder Valley. I'm reading this statement on behalf of the Stop Wonder Inn Citizens Group. There's one thing suggested by the Wonder Inn proposal, and it's that the developers seem very inexperienced in the hospitality business. In over 100 years, the Wonder Valley has had a population, no developer has ever considered building anything close to this size in Wonder Valley. We're talking about not Motel 6, not Holiday Inn, not Airstream Glamp Ground, not even any actual small boutique hotels have made any attempt to develop in this unincorporated area. These developers were aware that Wonder Valley has no infrastructure, no potable water, no septic system, and no public services. Therefore, it would be a waste of their time and money and investment in an area they must know can't accommodate their hotel, their hotels, excuse me. The developers in question didn't even research the land and its viability. At a community meeting held by the developers in May of 2022, 99 of 100 of those in attendance were very opposed to this project, but the developers, developers didn't care. The owner said he had a dream, we all do that, and wanted to build this gigantic resort in Wonder Valley because he wanted to. They have shown zero care or concern about this disadvantaged, unincorporated community. In the initial study, in an answer to the SEQA question asking the applicants if there would be a conflict with any land use plan or policy, the applicant stated that Wonder Valley, quote, "has no community plan," unquote. Apparently, they didn't look. If they had opened the county policy plan and read it, they would have discovered that Wonder Valley Community Action Guide that existed before the applicant purchased the property. In the staff report, 2.11 Master Response 11, Land Use Planning, the only response the applicant gives is, is in reference to Plan Framework, Community Focus Statement B, the only portion of the guide that deals with tourists traveling between Mojave National Trails Monument and Joshua Tree National Park. The applicant fails to acknowledge the requirements referenced in LU 4.5, fails to mention the value statement requirements, and fails to consider the aspirations of the Wonder Valley community. In this master response, the applicant chose only pieces they thought they could respond to. Within the comments submitted to the planning department were over 40 pages of land use rebuttal and facts about why this proposed project does not mean many of the county, does not meet many of the county land use requirements and intentions. The applicant has failed to address most of these in their response, and when they did address the land use elements, they provided no facts or substantiation of their claims. Please do not approve any applications or conditional use permits for this environmentally destructive and policy plan abusive project.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Next up is Kavner Walpete, and Kavner is followed, and I don't know how to say this, C-H-N-X-Zizzix, I think. Am I close?
Hi.
Okay. You're up.
Hi, I'm Lauren Walpert. I don't have a personal story or journey to share, except I am a resident of Wonder Valley, having moved from Joshua Tree because they are two separate towns. The Wonder Valley Inn Hotel Complex, which includes 106 room hotel, a 24 hour restaurant, a spa and conference room, and Olympic sized swimming pool, is completely inappropriate for Wonder Valley, with one of the major concerns being the quality and quantity of the groundwater in the area that developers plan on using. The county has previously deemed the water in Wonder Valley as non-potable on several occasion, which has led to the suspension of critical public services, such as the closure of the fire station and the shutdown of the kitchen at the Wonder Valley Community Center. Despite those closures, the Wonder Inn has somehow approved for a plan to cosmetically treat the groundwater, which does not improve portability by proposing that a luxury hotel of this size and offering would only employ 20 full-time employees. This is a deliberate underestimate, especially considering the Wonder Inn developers have also expressed interest in an additional 24 luxury villas, which I know we're not talking about today, but is, they have, those would be located on the 120 adjacent acres, which we are talking about today, which would further increase the demands on staffing levels. At a minimum, an environmental impact report is required to determine whether the Wonder Inn qualifies for its awarded TNC well designation based on a realistic staffing level for a 24 hour, five star hotel of this size to expose, to avoid exposing guests and employees to minimally treated non-potable water with high level on contaminants and dissolved solids. And we're not even, haven't even addressed part time. The most recent studies of the Dale Basin aquifer are too old to provide accurate assessments of the availability of water, and the Wonder Inn proponents have not investigated this impact in any of their CUP submittal documents. Can the county ensure that the Wonder Inn will not have a detrimental impact on the environment, public health, and numerous residential wells surrounding the project site, and the sustainable management of the Dale Basin aquifer if an, if an environmental impact report is not completed? To not leave a rhetorical question out there, the county cannot. The desert is not barren.
That's time.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Next up, I think I've got one of the Zizzix, and I'm informed it's Chinks?
Thank you Commissioners. You're close. My name is Kimberly Andromeda Zizix. I am a resident of the Morongo Basin and the Director of Nature-Based Youth Education Program, the Institute of Inquiry. When land uses are permitted to balloon far past the limits of their surroundings, there are dire human and, and environmental impacts that capitalism will not solve. As my husband was formerly Director of Operations with the Wonder Inn's Management Company, Desert Beacon, I am intimately aware of the problems with this project. First, contrary to Mr. Greenberg's statement today, two employees of the Mojave Desert Land Trust informed me moments ago that the Wonder Inn team has not been in touch with their nonprofit regarding their negative environmental impact. These developers have shown time and again that their intention is to extract the greatest amount of wealth from this project and share only the information they deem palatable with the county planning department and with the public. According to recent information from Desert Beacon, the current well on the property is dry. How can a project of this scale with a 6,300 square foot pool exist on a dry well without causing unsustainable depletion of the Dale Basin aquifer? Since the Wonder Valley Fire Station closure in 2017, response times have lengthened to nearly 15 minutes. Will the Wonder Inn developers be funding the reopening of the fire station and providing ambulances? Historically, the TOT funds Mr. Greenberg cited today are rarely utilized for the needs of Wonder Valley residents. The proposed development's light pollution does not come close to conforming with local dark sky ordinances and would be visible throughout much of the eastern Morongo Basin. The developers have been informed of all of these concerns on multiple occasions and have responded only by revising their public good neighbor image coupled with non-action. At last year's community meeting, Mr. Greenberg said, quote, "Some might think it is a big developer moving in, but it's just my business partner and I," end quote. Perhaps Mr. Greenberg can speak to why he called my husband to help host a group of investors from Singapore at the Wonder Inn in late November. The developers' carefully curated ignorance is an approach designed to diminish the long list of serious and grave concerns to this project's viability. While I appreciate their love of the desert, what I do not appreciate is the assumption that our community is a population of ignorant, uneducated residents who oppose progress of any kind. We have done our research. I have faith in the power of local government. I beg you to note the developers' blatant disregard of the county's code requirements, our community's concerns, and the safety of our scarce groundwater and endangered wildlife. I vehemently request that in your best judgment, this application be denied. Thank you for your time.
Kimberly, hang on, hang on, Kimberly. Is there somebody else there with your same last name?
The person prior to her wishes to no longer speak.
Ah, got it. Okay, so Michael Cohen, you're up, and then Lee Scott. And Lee is going to be the last of our speakers until we do a lunch break. So sorry, I fell off my schedule here. So I'm looking for Michael Cohen and Lee Scott.
Here.
All right. Very good, sir. When you're ready.
Do I start?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Dear Board of Supervisors, my name is Michael Cohen, and I live in Wonder Valley. There was no indication in the initial study that the Wonder Inn project would use solar power. In one of the world's sunniest places, this seems unreasonable. Additionally, the project estimates that it will only require a staff of 20. This number is not realistic for 106 room hotel with a restaurant and full-service spa as promoted as a five-star facility. According to www.hotelmanagement.net, 100-room hotels support 66 jobs at the hotel itself. In addition to the 106 hotel guest rooms, the Wonder Inn Hotel Complex also advertises 100-seat, 24-hour restaurant, full-service spa, and conference rooms year round. The Wonder Inn has also advertised, this was confirmed by one of the developers to The Sentinel, that it would manage 24 future luxury villas located on the additional 113 adjacent acres owned by the Wonder Inn developers. It is highly unlikely that the Wonder Inn and its future planned developments would be able to maintain an appropriate level of service with a staff of less than 25 employees total over three shifts. It appears that this staffing number was presented to gain approval for a TNC water system, but in reality is significantly under the staffing requirements of a hotel advertising the following offerings. A local, long-established hotelier and restaurant owner manages fewer than 50 rooms along with a restaurant bar at 65 employees prior to COVID, and does not find possible the idea that the 106-room Wonder Inn could manage with 20 employees. This person also notes that finding staff is currently more difficult than ever before due to the shortage of housing and new economic challenges. The question is, where would all the new staff come from and where would they live? Inexpensive housing once abundant in Wonder Valley has dried up as local homes are bought by new residents and investors, and renters already, already face diminishing options. It is unlikely that staff for the project could be pulled from current, the current available population, and therefore the project would either force an increase in local population with new housing impacts, or require substantial commuting, resulting in an increase in greenhouse gases. An environmental impact report must be prepared to include realistic estimates on staffing and to fully evaluate impacts of the Wonder Inn project on greenhouse gases. In addition, I find it highly problematic for residential property to be rezoned as commercial in an area that is rural and fully residential. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you. Next up is Lee Scott, and then we're going to break for 30 minutes.
Good morning. My name is Lee Scott of a local residence. I'm opposed to the Wonder Inn project. According to the countywide plan, new development is to be consistent with the physical, historical character and identity of the community. The Wonder Inn is not. Missing from the applicant's plan is how they will provide for emergency services. Emergency services are already overburdened in this area. Also missing from the applicant's plan is where will the employees be housed? We have a housing crisis already due to the oversaturation of vacation rentals. At a recent hearing here, a local resident restaurant owner testified that if she is lucky enough to find a new hire, she also has to find a place for that person to live. Then we have the problem with the water. The Wonder Inn wants to use groundwater. The county has previously deemed the groundwater non-potable. We need to know what impact this will have on existing residential wells. We don't have any recent studies regarding the quantity and quality of water in the Dale Basin aquifer, so it would be most prudent to require an environmental impact report before this project goes any further, and very irresponsible not to require that report.
Very well. Thank you. We appreciate all of the comments. We're going to take a 30-minute lunch break, and then we'll reconvene. And we were in the middle of testimony, and we were taking testimony from Joshua Tree. We're going to resume that on, we're starting with Melissa Spur, and on deck is Peter Spur. So when we're ready. Apparently, I'm more ready than they are.
Just a moment. Well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Come on, Joshua Tree, you're making me look bad here because Kareem thought he had more time. I chased him in here, and now he's gone out. See, I could have made it. I could have been another two calls. My friend, I appreciate your sense of humor and that you allow this.
A comment?
There we go.
I would like, I want to thank, with the three minutes, you never have time to do this. I want to thank the county for having this facility available, and I think that the county should be keeping track of the greenhouse gases that we don't spend, so you can report that to the state on how you're saving greenhouse gases.
You're suggesting that falls to the benefit of this project?
It falls to the benefit, yes, of this project, every single project that is commented on from here.
All right, very good. So we're trying to bring our public testimony back. We're looking for Melissa Spur, and Melissa will be followed by Peter.
Do we possibly have the next speakers on the list? Let's move him toward the end of the list, and we'll try their name again.
I'm Constance.
Lose yourself, and you should have three minutes.
Okay. Hi, my name's Constance Walsh. I live in Landers. Good afternoon, supervisors and all my fellow human beings. Why are we even here? Well, here's the answer I see on that wall right up there, and the letters are so big that I can read them from here even with my senior eyes. There's all the small print that we know so well, and then in big letters it says "The Law." And this seems to be mostly what we're talking about here. Well, the law has two layers. There's the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. And we're here because of the letter of the law, because we've forgotten the spirit of the law. What came first was the spirit. And when I looked up the responsibilities of the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, the words that came up all the time were "community" and "land," "land" and "community," "community" and "land," not developers, not even money, because I know that there is the responsibility to manage money, but not to bring it in. When we lose the spirit of the law, we lose everything. When something happens in the desert, it is visible all around. That's why there's so many people from different desert communities here. When something bad happens, it depresses people. When people get depressed, they get numb. When they get numb, they become powerless. It all goes together. When I came to Pioneer Town in 1979, we did exactly what we're doing here, and it's still standing. And our motto was, "Don't mess with Pioneer Town." I'd like to say it again, "Don't mess with us desert people." There's also confusion between, and I'm addressing this to the applicant, between rights and privileges. They're often confused. Rights are very, very basic, and what he is talking about is privileges. It's an abuse of privilege. That's it. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Next up, Cordelia Reynolds, and then Carrie Lay?
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Cordelia Reynolds, and I am a resident of Landers. I'd first like to take a moment to acknowledge all of you and thank you for denying the 640 Glamping Project in Flamingo Heights. Just a few weeks ago, I see a lot of similarities between both developments. Today, we are here because this applicant is asking for a conditional use permit for a very large resort, along with rezoning of 21 acres from rural lands to commercial land. Both decisions require discretionary approval. That means you, commissioners, must hear our public comments, and you must have our public comments influence your decision. The commissioner brought up a really key point today. He said, "What is to stop this developer from selling this land to another company who would, in fact, develop all 24 acres?" So that means you, commissioners, must agree that a 24-acre commercial development is appropriate in Wonder Valley. Based on all of the issues brought to you today by my community, I will assume that you are going to conclude that it is very much not appropriate for our rural community. A lot of people have brought up the issue of not having a fire station or adequate resources. I today went upstairs and spoke to the sheriff's department, and I asked them, "How many sheriff parole Wonder Valley?" Three. Three sheriffs. And those sheriffs are also paroling 29 Palms. That's not enough support for a development of this size. I'd also like to speak to the demand, because I do think you're inaccurate. There is not a demand for a resort of this size in Wonder Valley. To prove that, you can go on Airbnb.com and look for this weekend. Look and see how many homes are currently vacant. How many of those homes have been vacant for the last month? I will say hundreds and hundreds of homes are going unrented. Now, that has had a devastating effect in our community, but it also should tell you that the big boom of this area in terms of tourism is not what you may think it is, and our community has suffered for it. So in fact, I would say, no, there is actually not a demand for a resort of this size. Now, I'd like to speak to the applicant himself. While I appreciate that you tried to give a personal touch in your presentation today, I take great offense to your use of the word "sustainable." There is nothing sustainable about your development. I have a better word for it. It's called greedy. Greedy and gross. And I think all of my incredible community members here today have illustrated much better than I can the specific reasons why your development is greedy and gross. Now, I will leave it to you, commissioners, to make the same conclusion, that it's just not appropriate, because this is a zoning question. This is a conditional use permit question. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. So Carrie Alley is up next, and Catherine Collins is on deck. Good afternoon.
Hi. My name's Carrie Alley, and I live in Pipes Canyon. Two weeks ago, the Planning Commission rejected a conditional use for the Flamingo 640 project, which was located in a large rural living parcel. This was a large commercial project masquerading as a campground. The Wonder Inn project proposes to expand three acres of commercial land to over 24 acres on rural living land. This would require both a conditional use and a general plan use amendment. The negative declaration for the Wonder Valley Inn project references land use policies that are included in the countywide plan, which was approved in October 2020. These countywide planned land use policies are specified in the countywide business implementation plan as stated for immediate action so that the development code and zoning tables are updated. San Bernardino County has failed to update the development code or the zoning tables within the timeframe required by the state. That means that there are significant inconsistencies currently between your general, the countywide plan and your development code. You've also exceeded the two-year limit to update that. You had claimed in the business plan that you were going to take immediate action. They recommend that the zoning and the land use plan are actually approved together, but they allow two years. It's now two and a half. Why, I see no, no sort of plan in place to update these land use plans. We've been without a land use director for over a year now. So because of these reasons, I don't believe any conditional use or general plan zoning changes should be approved at this time for any property in the Morango Basin. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Catherine Collins, and Catherine is followed by Ben Holstrom.
Hello, my name is Catherine Collins. I'm a resident of Joshua Tree and frequent visitor and appreciator of Wonder Valley. On page 62 of the initial study, the CQ question is asked, "Would this development cause a significant environmental impact due to a conflict with any land use policy, plan, or regulation adopted for the purpose of avoiding or mitigating an environmental effect?" And from page 48 of the staff report, the developers still believe that, quote, "As stated in the initial study, because of the open design concept where buildings are spaced out and the heights of the buildings are similar to a two-story building, the proposed project would blend into the surrounding area similar to the scattered large lot residences." Let's take a moment to talk about the size and visual impact of this proposed project. Right now, the pink building is the only building in that area. It's 18 feet tall. Anyone who's gone to Wonder Valley knows how that building stands out when driving down Amboy Road. It's a landmark. There are no other two-story buildings in sight. The proposed Wonder Inn would have up to 20 stacked hotel rooms at a height of 20 feet each. Each of those 20 structures would be taller than the well-known pink building. Now add in the 50 or so remaining hotel containers at 10 feet tall each. Even these shorter structures are taller than most of the homes and cabins in the area. Besides those buildings, the proposed Wonder Inn includes an event center, a wellness center, event tents, a facilities building, a 31-foot-tall water tower, a fitness tent, a locker room. Sorry, I have to turn the page here. Multiple light poles for the parking lot, a large entry sculpture, palm trees, entry signage, and who knows what else. There's no way around it. This is a huge resort, and there's nothing like this at all currently in Wonder Valley or anywhere else in the Morongo Basin, for that matter. As the developers claim, doesn't really sound like this development will, quote, "blend into the surrounding area." The height, density, and number of proposed structures makes it impossible for this resort to blend in with the surrounding homes and natural landscape that will simply stick out like a sore thumb. The developers try to claim that this massive resort complex can fit into Wonder Valley because of the, quote, "open design concept." I find it very hard to believe this statement. Anyone who's been to Wonder Valley can see how out of scale this luxury resort development would be. I'll end with land use policy LU-2.3. "We require that new development is located, scaled, buffered, and designed for compatibility with the surrounding natural environment and biodiversity." The Wonder Inn does not meet any of these requirements. It is a massive vacation development designed for the well-to-do and a disadvantaged, unincorporated community. The proposed Wonder Inn does not meet the requirements of CQ, land use element policy LU-2.3, as well as many other land use elements as noted in the numerous written comments that have been submitted. This project should not be approved for construction. These parcels should not be rezoned. Please refer to well-researched comments from many of the locals, including those who have chosen to speak here today, and please vote "no" and deny the approval of this out-of-place luxury resort complex. Thank you.
Very well, thank you. Next up is Ben Holstrom, and Ben is going to be followed by Mark Houston? Houston? There you go.
I'm Ben Holstrom. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I live in the unincorporated areas of 29 Palms near Wonder Valley. I've been here going on 23 years, are unanimously, without reservation, oppose this outrageous building. Because as someone said earlier, once the door is open, you cannot close it. What's Wonder Valley going to look like in 10, 15, 20 years from now? I wish that the animals and the floor and the fauna and the turtles could be here to speak on their own behalf today. Where are the employees going to stay? Where are they going to find a place to live since the Airbnb has taken over? Once this door is open, it will not be closed. And who is it open for? For avaricious, let me say, greedy developers with only one thing in mind, and that's profits in perpetuity. Lastly, I'd like to point out the airstream park development in Joshua Tree. Thank goodness, as was pointed out to me today, that it is not near the highway. But if you're driving east or west on Highway 62, it is the most god-awful, ugliest ghetto I have seen. So please respect our area. Drive out there if the commissioners have not been out there. You can feel the resonance, you can feel the energy, and you can feel the vibrations. Well, with that helicopter port, let's not kid ourselves, that's not just for emergencies. As time ticks away, it'll be used for well-endowed people who are enriched by finances. They'll be flying down to Palm Desert, you know, for lunch and et cetera. Please help this area and our natural environment and vote against this. There is no justification whatsoever. Thank you.
Ben, hang on, hang on one second. Ben, I want to clarify. Helicopter was in the last project, not in your project, or did I miss it in your project? Okay. I just want to clarify the record. We've got a little blending going on here, and I don't want people upset about the wrong reasons. Okay. I'm sorry. So we're looking for Mark next, and then after Mark is Brian Bellamini?
Mark, is that you? Yes, it is. Mark Houston.
Very good.
This is Mark Houston. I'm a resident of Wonder Valley, where I've lived for almost 40 years. Wanted to comment on the project, which I oppose, but there's some, a history of that site that's being overlooked that concerns me. First of all, let's discuss the history that's not of that site. It was never a post office. I don't know where that rumor started, but that's inaccurate. That property was first used as a staging area, an office for the Rural Electrical Cooperative that energized Wonder Valley. They put in the power grid in Wonder Valley back in, I think about 1960 is when it occurred. One thing that concerns me about that is putting in, you know, putting in a power infrastructure means transformers. Back in 1960, transformers meant polychlorinated biphenols, PCBs. There's good reason to believe they may have been stored at that site or even serviced at that site during its initial use, and I think it's not responsible to require soil testing to make sure that nobody's going to be exposed to that currently. Another use the site went through, I mean, its history, it was used for a while by a mining cooperative that was doing exploration and mining development up in the Gold Park Grove, Gold Crown area. As part of their work, they brought down some materials that they ran through a cyanide recovery process to lease the gold out of it. This filtration process was done on-site there at the pink building. Now, you need to ask yourself, was that stuff handled responsibly? What did they do with the rest afterwards? In the interest of public safety, this isn't something that should be left to ambiguity. You know, this is something, for both the people that are going to visit, the public, if I complained about something like this to our local land use services office, they would investigate as a matter of course. And yet, I'm told when I submitted the comments about this that it's unfounded, they don't have proof. Well, you know what? I worked for those people there at that mining operation for a couple of days. Not very long, but I can name names there, and I can tell you with certainty that I'm aware of that history of the site, and I know other people in the community that are also aware of that history. So best course of action would be deny the project, but if the project has to go through, it must not go through without an environmental impact report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Brian, and Brian is going to be followed by Caroline.
Yes, hello. I am Brian Bellamini, resident of 29 Palms, and I also own a small recreational cabin in Wonder Valley. When I bought these properties, I did so knowing we are next to a national park, and I fully expect, and I think it's not unusual, that new developments, including hotels of all sizes and scales, will continue to be built in this national park region. However, I too oppose approving this application for a project of this size as it relates to this particular site, as I believe the spot in Wonder Valley is owned RL5. It's just not the right place for this type of project. I would urge the applicant to find a different, more suitable site. Now, I've not had the time to sit down and evaluate all the zoning throughout the county in detail, but I'd like to think there is a land already designated for such a project, or if there isn't, there's at least a location where zoning change can be considered that would be less intrusive and a better fit with the community. I would urge the county to take action and become proactive on this topic in general as a whole and explore... as a whole, and explore commissioning a master plan for future developments, assuming one does not already exist, which I'm not aware of one, so that growth can be managed in an organized and structured way. Rather than playing whack-a-mole where the community has to keep showing up at these meetings to speak against individual applications as developers try to guess where is or isn't a good site to build on, it would be far better if master plan could designate an area and say, this is the place where these types of projects are to be located. In effect, the master plan would include the consultation of a team of experts that incorporates all the concerns we've heard here today: water, sewage, wildlife, fire and emergency services, traffic patterns, et cetera, as well as the input of the community residents. Then, either through zoning and/or a creation of a special business district, the county can designate where projects such as these should happen, and as the projects get built, that new tax revenue can be funneled back into the community to improve our stressed or non-existent services and infrastructure. Also, with a master plan in place, you might find we are eligible for federal infrastructure money that was recently approved by President Biden. And if I could just go one step further, and this is just my layman's opinion, but I would suggest the applicant, the county, and community, take a look at Utah Trail, which is an arterial road that runs north to south, directly connecting the city of Twenty-Nine Palms to the north entrance of the national park. I can imagine a future where Utah Trail is developed into a commercial corridor, beginning inside the city limits of Twenty-Nine Palms and then expanding incrementally southwards towards the park, with official master plan being in place, developers could proceed with confidence in building new housing for the area. Likewise, plans for extending utilities and services can be put into place. There's a lot of open undeveloped land there where I think a project of this sort could make a lot more sense compared to this site in Wonder Valley. And were this project to be moved to that area, it would have my support if this was the site to be found there. It's my hope the residents and members of the commission will contact our county officials in petition for creation of a master plan.
Very well, thank you, sir. Next up
Thank you.
is Caroline Paramore, and Caroline will be followed by Steve Ballard.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Caroline Cartamian. I am a resident of Flamingo Heights and a community member of the Morongo Basin. My primary point I will be making here today in opposition to the Wonder Inn project amongst many other informed comments by my fellow community members is from an ecological perspective. Let's take a second to observe that every main agenda item before you today mentions adoption of mitigated negative declaration. Commissioners, I am concerned that the trend of privately hired biologists and environmental consultants to conduct surveys for developments of this type and scale could potentially make these adoptions easier without paying attention. A few months ago, I heard a timely account by Luke Basulto of National Park Conservation Association, which you heard earlier today, I'm so glad that he spoke before me, via the respected podcast called Ninety Miles From Needles, in which he describes his account stumbling upon a baby tortoise just across the road from the site. It was so exciting to learn of this new desert tortoise life, but also heartbreaking at the same time listening to Luke's account in context of this preposterous project. Commissioners, if you care and are doing your due diligence, you will pay attention to all the accounts of your county members today and submissions of tortoise sightings to the California Fish and Wildlife Commission database. All you need to do is pay attention. If you approve this project, I fear you are setting a dangerous precedent. Therefore, I demand a full environmental impact report that will include traffic studies, wildlife impact, air and quality, noise, dark sky impacts, and more. I'm against the approval of this resort hotel in what is a biodiversity hotspot because it will make the rural living area unsafe for animals, flora, and the community. Finally, many of my concerns against the Wonder Inn project parallel those against the Flamingo Six Forty project, so it would only make sense if your decision echoes the denial two weeks ago during your meeting against a likewise appalling resort development. Thank you so much for your time and for paying attention today.
Thank you very much. Next up is Steve Bardwell, and Steve will be followed by Sarah Kennington.
My name is Steve Bardwell. I am an architect and president of the Morongo Basin Conservation Association. A focused EIR is needed for the Wonder Inn. Approval of this major resort would be in clear violation to the guidelines of the land use elements and county policy plans that states new development should be focused in areas where there is potable water, wastewater treatment, roadways, and public services. None of these are present in the proposed site. The initial study must be rejected along with all the findings, as it does not represent the true intent of the developer. The initial study does not include the developer's stated intent via social media to develop the balance of the property into lodging for the Wonder Inn under the guise of SDRs come hotel rooms. The applicant earlier today failed to reveal his relationship to the company that would construct these SDRs. The development is in opposition to the Wonder Valley Community Action Guide, policy LU four-point-five, community identity, that requires that developments be consistent with and reinforce the physical and historical nature of the rural communities. The response provided within the justification for, for approval being, quote, "a weakness", including the unknown future of development, quote, "as a rationale for approval is ludicrous", as evidenced by the speakers here today. Any rationale for rezoning the RL to commercial based on the existing structure, laying unused for decades as an existing commu- commercial enterprise, is faulty. There is no commercial use in place at this time. The analysis under SEQA does not adequately address the cumulative impacts of this development upon the entire area of the vehicle miles traveled, VMTs, and consequent greenhouse gas emissions. Resorts and glamping facilities spread out widely in this huge geographic area are inappropriate and contribute, can contribute to the ongoing climate emergency. This must include an analysis of the VMTs associated with commuting of the employees and the thousands of existing SDRs. NBC has pointed out inconsistencies in what appears to be the efforts to minimize the presence on or this, on or near the site of desert tortoise by the developer. I remind the Commissioners of the disastrous experience for the desert tortoise at the Palin Power Project, where resulting in the death of over a thousand desert tortoises were translated, translocated and died. Our extinction crisis is the climate emergency that demands that we not shortcut this essential element of study. Lastly, in reference to the potential for another operator, why have any requirement for a site plan of the consideration of this rezoning at all? In addition to the IRR, this project should be, prepare a detailed plan, a planned use development on pit, on pond which a CUP is based
That's time.
with a time limit for implementation.
Thank you, Steve. Next up is Sarah Kennington, and Sarah will be followed by Anthony Van Coven.
Thank you for the, I'm Sarah Kennington. I am a resident of Pipes Canyon and a director, uh, of the Morongo Basin Conservation Association. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on the proposed Wonder Valley Inn development. I have significant concerns about this project. The construction and continuing operations of the, of the inn will significantly, uh, have significant irreversible impacts on the landscape and its natural resources. The flora, the fauna, it will also threaten the peace and quiet, the quality of life of the surrounding rural community residents. These impacts have not been adequately assessed in the initial study, nor has the developer been forthright. Does the IS adequately define existing, uh, zoning? Is the parcel on which the pink building sits commercially zoned as stated, has it reverted to residential, uh, living? Regardless, there should be no rezoning to allow a commercial resort of the nature proposed, the surrounding parcels that are currently zoned rural residential. Spot zoning of this nature should be considered, uh, should not be considered in this environmentally sensitive area. Denying the concurrent filings for general plan use amendment rezoning from RL, uh, deny them and, and the conditionally used permit. Resorts of this nature and scale of the proposed Wonder Valley Inn should be located closer to the region's tourist amenities, in particular closer to Joshua Tree National Park. This would minimalize, as stated earlier, vehicle miles traveled, VMT, to and from accommodations to their destinations. This would reduce carbon use and pollution. It would isolate damage to the fragile envi- desert environment and associated wildlife corridors. It avoids the creep of noise and light into a pristine environment. It only makes sense. The IRS lists SEQA environmental factors potentially affected: aesthetics, biological resources, hydrology, water quality, noise, public services. These have been spoken to today and clearly deserve honest assessment of the impacts. The IRS declares each of these as having no or less than significant impact or a mitigated negative impact. The comments today unanimously challenge these findings as incorrect and/or dishonest. In closing, the common sense rule in my mind clearly rules today. The proposed Wonder Inn would have a significant and negative impact on the environment, positive, a bad effect on the environment. It doesn't fit. It would stick out like a sore thumb. Others have said that. It would damage the quality of life, perhaps life itself, for the resident tortoises, other wildlife, and humans, all the while providing no amenities and little or no economic benefit to the local community. I urge you to deny this project or minimally to request a thorough environmental impact report. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Next up is Anthony Van Coven, I think, and then Anita Kerther. Kerther?
Good morning, or good afternoon at this point, Commissioner. My name's Anita Kercher. I best describe myself as a longtime visitor of the area, but today I'll be delivering a comment on behalf of my Aunt Christine Kercher, who can't be here, but as a community member of the Wonder Valley for the past thirty years, has done extensive historical documentation of the district that the Wonder Inn would be located in. Her documentation shows that this project's mitigated negative declaration does not meet SEQA guidelines regarding historical resources, and that it would be negligent for the commission to approve it today. A distinctive feature of Wonder Valley are the small, now, now iconic Jack Rabbit Homestead cabins that dot our landscape. This landscape has become iconographic of the Mojave Desert, as well as the tourism in the Joshua Tree area, and that is in thanks to the cultural work of local artists, which have received coverage from wide-reaching outlets such as KCET, New York Times, California's Gold, Desert X, just to name a few. Now, I know this because, uh, like I said earlier, I'm not from the county, but I am from California, and my friends want to visit the Joshua Tree area, not just for the natural beauty that the, that the developers earlier cited, but just as much for the eclectic cultural scene that has quite literally come out of the work of community members that you have heard from today opposing this inn. It's the same cultural tourism that the developers hope to capitalize on when they invoke the name, the Wonder Inn. The cultural appeal of Wonder Valley and the wider high desert area is inseparable from the historical landscape I mentioned earlier that has inspired it. This inn will sit in the middle of the historical Wonder Valley Small Track at Homestead District, which was established in the nineteen-thirties. No new significant commercial, institutional, or residential development has occurred in this area for over fifty years. So for over eighty-five years since the establishment of the district, this district's one-hundred-and-forty-seven square miles of remote, rurally settled wild desert have remained essentially unchanged, and meanwhile has inspired a cultural arts movement that is significant to California's history. Mr. Weldy, I think you can see the role that consistent land use policy for eighty-five years has played in creating this historical cultural resource. Additionally, like mentioned earlier, the pink building the developers proposed to renovate was the, as the main hotel lobby, is a documented artifact of the nineteen-fifties federal rural electrification program. This makes the building proof of one of the few regions of overlap in the country between these two federal programs, and we are in consultation with the California Office of Historic, of Historic Preservation to add this building to the California Historic Registry. To recap, none of the historical context or resources I've raised in my comment today have been addressed by this project's initial study or the applicant's response. To adopt staff recommendation to approve this project before full evaluation of the impacted historical resources would be inconsistent with SEQA guidelines. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Um, I'm still looking for Anthony Van Coven, I think, um, but we also have Jamie Caffrey, uh, who I guess is on deck or up next. Do we know, do we know if Anthony's still there? Not yet. So I'm looking for Jamie, and then Robert, either Raul or Powell is, uh, will be after Jamie.
Hi, I'm Jamie Caffrey. I'm a resident of, uh, Twenty-Nine Palms, Wonder Valley area, and I just want to, uh, you know, go on the record and say that I don't think this is a very, uh, good idea. Uh, Wonder Valley is a very special area. It's very unique in that it has a wide-open space that you can drive through and explore, and, you know, that's very rare these days. You know, most places you can't find that. And, um, fortunately, there's development that is, you know, conveniently located in the town of Twenty-Nine Palms, and, um, I think this is a very ill-conceived idea, and I hope you'll appreciate the value of the natural beauty of this area, and hopefully we can preserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Next up is Robert Raul or Powell, and, um, and Robert will be followed by Ruth Kreitz.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and, uh, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Bob Raul. Did a good job on that, and I live in Wonder Valley. In the spirit of the developers, let me state that I'm an orphan. Before we can effectively evaluate the impact this project would have upon Wonder Valley and its community, we must first be clear about the number of people that would be at this hotel and event space. The applicant's estimated staffing number of twenty seems insufficient. For a proposed five-star luxury hotel, the twenty-four-hour, hundred-seat restaurant, and all the amenities mentioned in the project description, it seems we could expect the following staff possibilities for the hotel. Twelve to fifteen staff, including a manager, likely one on-site at all times, housekeeping, eight to nine maids daily, depending on occupancy, one to two daily tenitorial for public, uh, areas and spa, including public restrooms and showers, lobby, reception desk, reservations, agent, cashier, concierge, uh, security. For the restaurant, ten to forty staff, including hostess, servers, bartender, prep cooks, sous-chef, chef, dishboozing staff, dishwashers, et cetera. Spa services, four to eight staff, including reservations coordinator, massage techs, yoga instructor, uh, manicure, pedicure services, skincare, et cetera, and pool and hot tub maintenance. Total staff estimate, twenty-six to sixty for basic daily function. In addition, this hotel resort seems, also plans to be an event space. We need clarification of the size and scope of possible events this venue might host, including how many additional staff may be required for event support. Here are a few possible staffing needs. Weddings and parties could include anywhere from fifty to five-hundred guests, five-hundred guests. And staffing to support this number of guests could include an event coordinator, setup crews, catering staff, additional servers, additional dish staff, additional security, parking assistance, cleanup crew, et cetera. Large events such as music events, festivals, could include a couple of pounds
That's time.
participants.
I'm sorry, sir, your time is up, but thank you for coming. Next up is Ruth Kreitz, and then we're going to circle back to Anthony Van Coven, Coven. There we go. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I, um, appreciate being allowed to speak. I, my name is Ruth Kreitz, and I'm from Twenty-Nine Palms, and I live approximately and I live approximately three-quarters of a mile from the proposed site. We bought our, we built our home here forty years ago. And when we built it, there was four other houses in the area where we built. Now, it's a small, little residential area with about twelve homes or fifteen homes, something like that. But anyway, the nice thing about it is no one lives behind me except the way-out people that live in the desert. And I like it that way because my room faces the street, and I don't like noise when I'm trying to sleep. I like it dark. I like it quiet. And the neighbor next door has a light that she leaves on. I'm looking for something that'll help me shoot it out or take it out or something because it's just too much light. We like a dark sky in the desert because we like to go out and look at the stars at night. Now, I'd like to remind you of one thing. Any building that is, any commercial building that's applying to be built in an area requires approval by the planning commission. So while it needs your approval, we expect you to really, really give consideration to both sides of the question. Do we want to build it there? Does it belong there? Do the people want it there? In Twenty-Nine Palms, we didn't want a dollar store. And now we have the fourth dollar store almost being completed. We don't need four dollar stores in Twenty-Nine Palms. Joshua Tree was, they, a dollar store put in a request for Joshua Tree, and the people of Joshua Tree vehemently fought it. They fought it tooth and nail. So it went away. But then surreptishly, it snuck back in, and now there's a dollar store in Joshua Tree. I don't think anyone in Joshua Tree uses it. Maybe people that go to visit do, but, you know, it's just not what they want. So I would like to remind you that while you are the planning commission and you look over the plans, you are not the rubber stamp committee. It's not your job just to take them and stamp them and move them across. Also, you would think with all the people who have given comments today.
Anita, your time's up, but it's good to remember.
Already?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I just have to say the people that are sitting in those two seats watching you need to be taking notes.
Anita, your time is up. Thank you. There we go. Russell, you got three minutes.
Okay. I would just like to thank the planning commission for their decision today. I would like to thank the planning commission for anything that they had to do with stopping off-road vehicles back in the mid-two thousands. I would like to thank the planning commission and the county for using the funds and stopping all of the illegal marijuana grows out there that do severely affect our aquifers in Wonder Valley. And I would like to thank the planning commission for making this decision based on the words of the community and the facts of land use, that this is not meant for anything of this size in Wonder Valley. One last thing I'd like to say is there's something going on in the planning department with planning services with the county there that why are we getting? It doesn't matter. Something isn't making it. We had tons of evidence, lots of evidence. They did not meet these requirements of your own county policy plans, and they just choose to ignore it. And same with the planning department. They approved all of this without any question, without even an EIR, and there's such significant information that was not presented by the applicants. So with all these, there's something needs to be looked into. Planning services, the planning department, this is very fishy. Something is up, and I don't know what it is, but maybe you with your authorities can take a look into this. I thank you for all your time and listening to us, and you have a great afternoon. I appreciate it. Thank you.